All right, I'm going to call this meeting in order. We're waiting for one other councillor who should be able to get in here any second. This is the May 16th meeting for the Committee on Community Resources and a joint meeting with the Northampton City Council. I'm going to note that we're being audio and video recorded. And we usually take a roll now, but actually, I'm going to ask the members to introduce themselves since some of you may not know us. I'm Jeanne-Louise Shara, I'm the Ward Four City Councillor, I'm also the Chair of this committee.
And I'm Dennis Bigwell, I'm the Ward Two City Councillor.
Maureen Kearney, Councillor from Ward One.
And we are missing Elisa Klein, who's the Councillor from Ward Seven, who we expect to come in any moment. So this is now the time when we have public comment. If you are here for the public forum, I'd suggest that you hold your comments until we start that, which is going to be very soon. But if you're here to address a committee on a matter that doesn't fit under the scope of the forums on the downtown economy, then this would be the time to come and address this committee. So I know that some people signed up, but is there anyone here who's not here to speak at the public forum?
Yes.
Well, then, while we're waiting for councillor to line, I'm just going to go over some kind of rules or a frame of expectations for the forum. We follow the same rule of conduct as the General Councillor does. We request stability and respect for all participants, though you may say what you like about us as elected officials and public figures. And we do not respond during public comment, which has just passed, but we do interact with you during the public forum. And while we welcome comments specific to your experience, we ask that if you have something negative or defamatory to say about someone or a business, that you not refer to them by name or in any kind of obvious identifying way. This is not a forum for grievances against specific people or businesses, and we're not an enforcement body for any sort of perceived violations. And I'm sure this won't be necessary, but I also have the right to rule some ad word if I feel like people are being followed. So this is primarily a fact-finding mission. So we're asking for your thoughts and opinions, but any data that you have that pertains to your experience would be helpful, and it would be more helpful than sort of general notions or feelings. So we might also ask you follow-up questions to kind of solidify things that we feel are vague or more anecdotal. We're also going to ask that you limit your comments to five minutes, and if there's more that you wish to say, once we've kind of given everyone a chance, if there's time, we welcome you to come back up to the podium and finish what else you have to say. Also, we have to ask that you state your name and your address for our record. So we don't have minutes to approve, right? So we're going to skip over that on the agenda, which means we're ready to start the forum. Just to give a little bit of background, today's forum is centered around business ownership, and it's the first of a series of four public forums pertaining to a committee study request that me, this committee, received in March from the City Council President and Vice President. And that request was to study issues relative to the local economy with a focus on businesses and workers in downtown Northampton and downtown Florence. To address this request, we're gathering current data from within the city administration and from outside organizations. We've received reports from the city's Economic Development Director, from the Director of Planning and Sustainability, the Greater Northampton Chamber of Commerce, the Pioneer Valley Worker Center, and the UMass Amherst Labor Center. The public forums, which we're starting today and will be continuing in June and July, there are three more, are to solicit testimony from those directly involved in the downtown's economy, including workers, business owners, property owners, arts and events organizations, and residents, on the pressures they feel, the issues they experience, and in addition, things that they think are done well and feel like could really be supported. Following these forums, the committee will compile this information into a report for the full City Council and consider if their recommendations of areas where the City Council could take action. We're not deliberating on any possible action until we've closed out the forums and everyone that wants to be heard by us has been heard by us. And to facilitate people sort of following along with these forums until the end of the study, we've established a webpage on the city's website. So if you go to the northhamptonma.gov website, go under City Council, there's something that says Committee Study Request. And on that page, we have minutes from the past meeting, links to the videos from the past meetings, any reports that we've received, and also, it'll describe how to submit written testimony if there's something that you didn't feel comfortable saying in public and want to submit to us, or if you think it's something Alex, or if you know someone who wants to share something but couldn't make it to a forum. So with that, I think we are ready to start. So, okay, do you think councillor could add something? Is there another, have other people signed up with another sheet too? So you don't have to sign up, I'm just going to go through the people who've signed up already, and then, you know, I will just call on people. So everyone who wants to speak, we're going to get a chance. So first off, I can start with John Rhodes.
Good evening. My name is John Rhodes, I live at 172 North Street in Florence. I'm here in my capacity as one of the partners in the Union Station operation and businesses contained within. You know, I've lived in this town all my life. You know, I pay my taxes, I've never gotten involved, this is the first time in recent history that I've ever come and spoke before the council or a committee. I've never felt the need to do it, but I buy a business downtown, and all of a sudden I feel like they have to come here all the time. But I think this is going to be my last appearance, because I really don't think I'm getting through. We don't have a very business-friendly environment here, and let me just cite some examples. We had a situation with the Hotel Northampton, and I won't mention any names, but we had the President, Vice President of the Council actually deliver the petition. I don't think that's business-friendly. We have a situation at the Union Station, and I've had two meetings with the Mayor, with Wayne Biden, with Dave Pomerance, and with Perry Masterson, and it pertains to our parking lot. I just came in here and I parked in the lot down here. I put a quarter in the machine, and I'm good till eight o'clock tomorrow morning. That's the same thing that says in the Union Station parking lot. The agreement with the city states that we have control of that parking lot at six o'clock at night. What we get is a full parking lot, and that's basically, you know, we brought that to the attention of the city. That's another example. We just had a situation where four over quota liquor licenses were approved. I don't begrudge those people for having liquor licenses, what I begrudge is that that's the Mayor's Economic Development Plan. Is that going to mean that there's going to be more people coming to town? I don't think so. I think the pie isn't getting any bigger, the slices are getting smaller. That's not an economic development plan. I'd like to propose right now that any money that the city makes, and I'd love for you folks to back me up on this, because I can't think of any reason why everybody wouldn't be in favor. The money that the city is going to make on those liquor licenses is probably an unbudgeted item. I think it would be a great gesture on the city's part if they donated whatever they make on those licenses to the Downtown Northampton Association for their holiday lights. We'll light up this place and it'll look like, you'll be able to see it from the space shuttle. So, Elisa, I've got a few more minutes here. One of the things that came out, I came here for the March 21st meeting, and I never identified myself, because I was kind of flabbergasted by the whole process. And that was when the Workers' Center delivered their report. You know, my concern about that is, I don't care, you don't pass the wage ordinance, I don't care, because we play by the rules. But I guarantee you, it's going to cost me more money, because somehow, I'm going to be audited, and I know I'm going to have to pay for it. It's just another layer of bureaucratic stuff that we have to put up with. For some reason, everybody thinks we're making money hand over fist. But like I mentioned at the full City Council meeting, the only people who have really made out on our purchase of the Union Station building in 2013 is one of the City of Northampton. And one more comment on the living wage. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. I went on the DPW website today, they have a seasonal worker, and the salary is $11 an hour. So, you know, how can you land base the restaurants when the City of Northampton is hiring people at $11 an hour? It just doesn't make sense, folks. So let's try to be a little more business-friendly. Let's try to, you know, understand that the people represented in this room are working hard to make a living, and they're contributing to the city coffers. And I think we just like a few breaks along the way. I'm not asking for any handouts, just be a little more sympathetic. I mean, our water and sewer, you know, we talked about that. I went to the meeting up in City Hall. Our fixed cost is going up 2,000 percent for our meter. I mean, that's quite substantial. And, you know, it's just the little things that are piling up on businesses to make it more difficult to operate, and I think we're heading down the wrong path. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr Finn?
Yep.
Before he sits down? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Should we make some of these chairs available? Yes. Do people need, there's one seat up here in the front that I see, and there might be another, I think there are a couple other chairs that are available. Is it bothering you? Mr Finn? There are chairs up here.
There's a few more chairs up here in the front, if there are anybody who wants a chair.
My name is Jack Finn, I live at 57 King Street in Northampton. For 28 years, I ran A to Z Science and Learning Store in downtown Northampton. I am a property owner now at 57 King Street where A to Z is still situated, and I live above the store, so I am a resident of downtown as well. And I'm here tonight to speak as the optimist in the room. And I'll tell you why I'm optimistic. We live in a beautiful valley, we're situated in one of the most beautiful places, we have beautiful architecture in the city. The city actually is so impressive that people, over 100 years ago, were calling this the paradise of America. So lately, we've added passenger train service, we're in the process of a rebuild at Pulaski Park, Smith College has just rebuilt their front gate beautifully, we have a new police station downtown, we've refurbished the Academy of Music, the Center for the Arts Building is coming along on Holly Street, there's new co-directors of the Store of Northampton, we have a beautiful bike path leading to the downtown, we have private property improvements that are probably too numerous to mention here. All these things are making me optimistic. The reason why I'm speaking tonight is I'm concerned about the criticism and the critical nature of some of the comments in the life of our downtown. And I think criticism is important as long as it's constructive. So I'm not afraid of criticism, I think we all have something to work for in this city, but I'd like to see it positive in nature, I'd like to see it not damaging our relationship to each other. When you want to take action, it requires a positive feeling about the action you're taking, and that comes from optimistic, constructive criticism and action taken. There are a couple of things that I would suggest that the City Council could do in support of the downtown. The first thing is that we have a brand-new DNA, Downtown Northampton Association, and I think the City of Northampton is an important partner with the DNA to help with the viability of the downtown, and that's a positive working relationship, and should not have a critical edge to it. People that don't like the downtown may never be satisfied with the action that we take downtown, and we just have to go forward with the positive people that want to buy into a future that's positive in nature. So I think the city has to be an optimistic, forward-thinking entity, and the Mayor and City Council can lead a role in that and getting involved with the association. And I'm just wanting to keep it things positive, because that's what's going to inspire positive action. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Mr Finn?
Susan Lance. I'm Susan Lance, I live at 74 Lyman Road, Northampton, and I agree with the first speaker that I think a donation of some kind could be in order for the liquor licenses. And my thought was that those businesses that receive them, wouldn't it be nice if in lieu of not paying $150,000, they gave some amount to the DNA? And I think that would be a very viable and appreciated formation, and maybe settle some of the rough edges around that. But I'm really here to suggest what I hope is a constructive idea, and that is, could would the City Council look into passing some kind of law, ordinance, whatever, that could come into effect if business properties in the downtown area are vacant for over X amount of time? I have to say that I personally feel like one property owner, business property owner, is holding me hostage. And if I had a business downtown, I think I would doubly feel that way. I don't see why any businesses should be held up to that extent that there isn't everything flourishing that's possible in the downtown area. So it would seem, I don't know anything about the laws, or how it happens, or whatever, but it seems to me that there would probably be some way or some act that could come into effect that over X amount of time, something is done, either rents are lowered, or there's proof given that it's fine to be rented, or someone else comes in to rent it, something to that effect, because I think it's getting a little ridiculous in regards to some of the properties here. Thank you.
Anyone have any comments?
Susan, I'll just offer a quick comment, I'm quite sympathetic to the suggestion. I know there's been a little bit of investigation into that sort of suggestion, and I'm pretty sure it would require state-enabling legislation to allow a city or town to do something like what we suggest, as well-intentioned as it might be. But we're certainly accumulating a list of items that we might want to recommend a legislative body take up, so.
I bet you should have a lot of citizen support.
This would fall into that category. There is provision in state law that'll allow government to step in if a property owner lets their property probably physically deteriorate to the point where it's a nuisance or safety hazard, then there's rights to step in. But at this point, I don't think there's an ability to step in.
Well, I think it'd really be worthwhile to make sure there is in some way to get into there to do something. As I say, at least have someone else take the property on or something.
Thank you for that suggestion. I would reiterate that I believe that's actually not some, some of the things you suggested are outside of our ability of jurisdiction, but I appreciate.
Well, maybe you could think about how it could help make it inside your jurisdiction to.
Yeah, and we can try and do creatively.
Do something about it.
Thank you.
Because I think it's a strong factor in what's going on here.
Other list, I have Anne-Marie Lucy.
My name is Anne-Marie Lucy, I live at 42 Pleasant Street. My business, Main Street Records, was on Main Street near Northampton from 1977 to 1997. We closed our downtown store when its declining sales income could no longer keep pace with increasing costs of doing business, specifically the cost of labor and of rent. That's almost 20 years ago, and things haven't changed much for business owners in our fair city. However, I see the long-term vacancies in downtown as a significant factor in increasing the cost of rent for spaces here. It creates an artificial lack of square footage. Our town's current Main Street per square foot price is around $37.50, some is higher than that at 42. If you are trying to start a new business and you look at that figure, and you go to a bank and say, "I'd like a small starter loan to cover a business going in for one year at this rate," you better be selling ice to Eskimos. Or it'll seem like that, because they won't give you any money. That's one of the factors. It's just, it's a very expensive town to try to get a new business in. Aside from that, I'd like to be positive, Mr Finn made the point that this, a lot of your points about how great a town this is, how beautiful it is, and how many things are already in place that we can increase our use of to improve pedestrian traffic, therefore business in town. Some of the things I'd like to see happen myself, I agree with Ms Lance, that there might be a good way possibly for the city to encourage property owners to not let spaces go derelict. And I realize that some kind of legal means is probably not at our disposal, based on what the co-chair just explained about legislation. But there have been some really great examples of increased cooperation between the city and business. I'd point out the Calvin Theater renovation, that is now a gem, it's a really great draw for the city. And there's a property owner who has obviously been very willing to work with the town in some ways, so let's keep that in mind when we're looking at other vacant spots. I know the Academy is city-owned, but that's another example of money well spent on renovation. Second factor I'd like to see increasing is cooperation between Smith and the downtown. If there's a way to somehow make Smith care what happens 50 feet from their gates, that would be nice. I'm not really sure if there is any kind of ombudsman or coordinator that works between city government and Smith College, but maybe there could be. Public policies like tax abatements and grants, I'm not really sure how many things like this are in place to promote downtown development or to encourage new business. But that's something perhaps the City Council can also look at when you present your report. Another great thing we had is Art Walk, but I don't think it's advertised enough. I'm not sure if the city can actually put any money toward advertising, or if there's a way to possibly encourage the businesses that do, that are part of Art Walk, to encourage them to put a little more money in the pot, to make the word get out, get more ads in papers, Springfield, Hartford. I just met people at a college graduation this past weekend who travel up from Connecticut regularly to Northampton because they really love the town. And I asked them specifically what they liked, and they named a particular appetizer, but folks will make the drive, we've got something that's worth coming to. I'd also like to see a permanent year-round public market established. I realize that right now, Forn's is generously offering the apron between their building and the parking garage, but I wonder if perhaps the city could examine the size of that parking lot and determine whether or not a portion of the public parking outdoor lot could be converted into a small but permanent market, perhaps have rotating vendors, changing seasons. Public markets are great draws, period. A permanent one outside would be kind of cool. I don't know if there's anyone in charge in the city, it's just, yeah, go ahead. Who actually coordinates the information that goes out about our town, on travel websites like TripAdvisor, or on social media like Facebook, but that would be really great if there were someone, maybe in the Business Development Office, who will charge for that as a tax. Good luck with your project, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Just a couple of things I'd say, I know that Smith and the city are contributors to the DNA, so there's something that's happening there already.
Well, whoever's written that check from Smith, go talk to them.
They do have like a community relations person, if I can give you his name, but there is someone who's sort of in charge of interacting with the community, so. And also, I believe the property that the Tuesday Market's on is actually city property.
Oh, I also share.
Anyone have any?
I would just point out, and I don't have any particulars in front of me, but somewhere in the last month or so, Smith announced, I believe, $520,000 of contributions to the combination of the city and various nonprofit organizations active in the city. I would encourage you to look at their press release and review what they've recently done.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seventeen? Okay. Thank you. So that's everyone who's signed up. I'm sure there are many more of you who want to speak, so, can people just start? Okay, Mr Dunnitt, please.
Hello, my name is Adam Garts, I live at 172 William Street, I own the Green Bean Restaurant here on Main Street, and I co-own the Roost with my business partner, Robin Wynn, though my thoughts here are my own, do not represent Robin or Andy or the Roost. I do better when I write it out, I'm not sure I have time for five minutes, so I'll just read. Thanks. First, I'd like to thank the council for this opportunity to share my thoughts and concerns about Northampton and to hear the thoughts and concerns of others. This process, in my opinion, is something that makes Northampton special. I'm grateful to live in a community where governance happens alongside and often manifests in conjunction with the citizenry. The two cents I want to add here are that I do not believe the sky is falling in Northampton. Though I only moved here with my family 11 years ago, I understand that there's an ebb and flow to business. There are going to be times where it feels like business is thriving, and there will be times when it feels like business is stagnating. While I don't believe the sky is falling, I do think there are reasons to believe we are in a down spell in our downtown economy at the moment. While I believe we could ride this down spell and assume or even hope that Northampton's economy will turn around by its own accord, I think it would be irresponsible for us to not look at some of the potential causes of this downward trend, and perhaps we might come up with some practicable steps that we can take to pull ourselves out of it. I've often cited my take on what's wrong about the current business climate in town as being easily encapsulated by the three Ps: parking, panhandling, and property values. While I do think there's ultimately ample parking downtown, I do not think, I do think that it is not a hospitable climate for parking, especially given that East Hampton just down the road has free parking throughout the city. I don't know firsthand how high the parking revenue is in Northampton, but I can imagine it is quite valuable, and I never proposed making parking free here in Northampton. But I do think our meters could be much friendlier. I think they should accept credit cards, and I believe all of the ticket machines favor paying the city, given the remaining time is not passed on to the next driver. I don't suggest this is unreasonable, but I do think that it might come off as in this level. Panhandling is a tricky one, I understand that is protected free speech, I'm not sure that I- I'm not sure that I'd propose banning it, even if that were an option. I'm really not sure what to do about it. I do believe, as it is, the panhandling presence in Northampton does make Northampton a less desirable place to come for a casual day of shopping and eating than it has been in the past. Again, I've only been here for about eleven years, but I've seen the problem worsen in that time period. And for eight and a half years of doing business downtown, I've heard from customers, friends, and other business owners that walking downtown is much less pleasant than it has been in the past due to overabundance of people asking for money. As a business owner, it's always struck me as a little awkward to have so many seemingly able-bodied young people asking for money but never really asking for work. It gives the impression that Northampton has become a destination or even a haven for young kids who are trying to make a gold-living life on the streets. It seems as if we are providing a hospitable environment for young people who are making that choice. And while Northampton might be good for them, it's not obvious to me that they are good for Northampton. Again, I have no suggestion of what to do about this. A little redundancy here, I apologize, with property values. I think one of the biggest issues we have in Northampton is the overvaluation of commercial property. I understand that for the owners of downtown property, it is their business, and it is their prerogative to do as well as they can in their business. I have no idea what their margins are, but I assume that their risk is just as great or even greater than any brick-and-mortar business owners in town. So I'm not here to say that they are bad or wrong, but I do think it is a problem. As we've seen, some property owners price their properties so high above market value, the result is that some of our most prime real estate in town has stopped vacant for years. This is just a bad look for Northampton. Whether it's the number of vacant spaces or the length of time they've been vacant or the visibility of these spaces, everything about them is an eyesore for visitors and locals alike. And a consequence of these empty spaces is that I believe it has the effect on other property owners that they think they should be charging more for their spaces. The problem is, we don't have the demographic of a Cambridge or a Brooklyn to make this inflated economy work. It is difficult for downtown retailers to price their wares more competitively because they're monthly nut for doing business downtown is so large. And given that parking can be so difficult in Northampton, and it's unlikely you'll be able to walk a block without being asked several times for money, it's cheaper and easier for people to do the retail shopping online. This is why I believe we see so many restaurants and particularly cafes downtown. Fortunately for myself and for my cafe friends in town, we can't buy a latte online. So what does this all amount to? Here I am presenting what I see are the problems. I know I'm not offering fixes. What would I like to see? I'd like to see friendly parking meters throughout downtown. They should accept credit cards, and I personally would like us to do away with the ticket machines. I think these two changes would go a long way in presenting ourselves as warm and friendly to folks coming from out of town to spend money in any number of ways in Northampton. As far as the panhandling, I'm not aware of all the services we currently provide in Northampton for people on the streets. I'd like us to provide services for people who like to get sober, fed, sheltered, and employed. For those who are happy to live on the streets, addicted, and hungry, I'm not sure what I'd offer, but I think the way it is right now is not great for least people or for downtown commerce. I don't think the city has any authority to regulate how much property owners charge [bleep]. I'm almost done. I don't think that the city has any authority to regulate how much property owners charge for their properties, but I wonder if the city does have any regulatory authority to compel property owners to maintain the physical appearance of their commercial properties in the central business district. Can property owners be fined for not keeping vacant properties up to certain building, fire, and/or architectural codes? Do we need to provide such a hospitable environment for giraffes who are not considered to be operating on behalf of the best interests of Northampton? I understand this is a nuanced situation, but I think this is amongst our biggest problems. And I see this as something that ultimately will come down to figuring out how these orders can be municipally compelled, that's my own say, to either fill their properties or at least keep them up to a set of physical and aesthetic standards. If they don't like or they get tired of the city enforcing a higher set of standards, perhaps they'll leave. Maybe they'll tire of the hassle, sell their properties, and let someone else take a stab at responsibility to own these properties. This is all just my two cents. I would understand if what I'm presenting here as the three Ps is perceived by some as an oversimplification. I definitely wrote this out very quickly. But also having spent yearly every day on this Main Street for the last almost nine years, I feel as qualified as anyone to offer these two cents. I believe there was another time when Northampton was the only destination for miles around for shopping, dining, and night entertainment. That's not the case anymore. Exciting things are happening in East Hampton, Springfield, Holyoke, Springfield, Amherst, Rattleboro, Hadley. I think we might arrive at a place where we have to work a little harder for the recognition we were once given by default. There are more towns and cities now competing for that recognition. Ultimately, I think it's a good thing. It means we can no longer rest on our laurels. It means we will hopefully come out of this chapter better and stronger than ever. Again, I thank the council for the opportunity. I thank my fellow business owners and stakeholders for their participation in this dialogue. I'm hopeful that we can work together to create the downtown we'd like to see. I do believe it is going to take a high level of cooperation and communication on all of our parts, but I'm optimistic. The thing we have in common is that we all love Northampton, and we'd all like to see it thrive. I'd say it's part of my most fundamental personal philosophy that if Northampton is not thriving for everyone, it's not truly thriving for anyone. I think we can get there, but it might involve starting by recognizing we are all on the same team. Thanks very much.
Okay. I'll just say that, you know, we had a parking study last year. And certainly, we've been looking at, you know, the possibility of having card readers and stuff like that. You know, the same issues that all of you experience where, you know, every time you swipe a card, there's a certain amount that's taken. So just trying to figure out the economics of it, I think, are challenging as they are for you guys with your businesses. But that's definitely something that's been looked at. Anyone have anything to ask or say?
Something Adam said, said off my phone, so sorry about that, Adam.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Come on. Okay.
I am O'Brien Tomlin. I live at twenty-one Pleasant Street in Northampton. I run Sierra Grill, and I also am a manager at the Building A Brewing in Florence. I'd just like to address, you know, the overcoated license thing. I personally receive one of those. We hope if it goes across the governor's desk. Very grateful for that. I've been at Sierra Grill for ten years now in June. We've managed to pull some numbers out of the place, but certainly the ability to serve alcohol, once again, in a space that served alcohol for seventy years, is great. I personally believe it's an inadequate system. It's a bad system. It puts licenses, you know, in a personal sale sort of level. I wish they'd been regulated a long time ago. This process is almost taking about two years since the lottery that happened with a license that wasn't being used. I'm grateful. Hopefully, we'll increase our tax burden. As far as what happens with the money, I don't even know if it's been decided yet and whether or not we can afford, depending on what the city puts up for it. I think you guys should, I would reiterate that that would be wonderful to put to that money towards something that would help commerce even more, such as a lighting display or whatever else you guys want to do with it. I'd also like to say that, you know, I think that they did add language in that that will turn those licenses right back to the city when we're done with them. So we will really see no final cash out on any sort of license transfer or what happens if you end up with that overcoated license being turned back into the city if I should close my business or sell it, or something like that. Speaking to the downtown commerce, I agree with Adam with the three Ps right there. Parking is one of the biggest things that's been mentioned to me all along. As I've grown my business, more and more people just can't believe what parking's like. And I do have to say that when I did do a tour of the Union Station, that lot was very clearly supposed to be turned back after six. It was daytime thing, and that's something you should, that's just ridiculous. And I stand with you a hundred percent on that. I was always like, what? A hundred-year lease? But it's, you know, that really needs to get straightened out because that's something that just needs to change, especially for these guys over there with such a big property and a big parking demand. The other part about parking is maybe we can turn some streets into one-ways or something like that. Instead of light parking, do some angled parking, get some more cars downtown. A little bit easier, a little better time limit, better access to maybe another public parking lot. Big thing for me, and I know everybody's going to cringe when I say this about the panhandling, it is intrusive. It is freedom of speech. One thing I've always wondered at is how we can have musicians that go to Berklee have to get a permit to be able to play on the street. And in my mind was, well, that's because they're conducting commerce. So as far as the panhandling goes, maybe we can come up collectively with some sort of parameters for conduct, impeding people's forward progress, how big your sign can be, how much, you know, sort of develop a standard, and to some extent, register some people who are, you know, enacting in commerce on our streets. Give them some sort of parameters. And likewise, give law enforcement or people the ability to say, hey, this person who's got, you know, spot, you know, one-twenty-six is just constantly in front of my door. I'm a merchant. I'm trying to, I mean, I have so many parks at my front door, like a dot right at ten o'clock. Everybody that's coming and going has to almost step on him, you know? And he's been taken away for consuming in public, things like that. But it's, you know, I think that was one of the complaints that law enforcement has. They really didn't have any kind of parameters. And maybe, I'm not trying to register people or anything like that, but I don't understand why they don't just get a permit, go through the town, you gotta put up to be able to do something like that. And if you're, you know, call a spade a spade, then it's commerce. They're enacting a business on our streets, and I think they should have some parameters. And, you know, I don't know. It's an odd thought, but people, that's one of the other things. And then the other thing is the property. It's incredibly expensive to do business in downtown. I personally have a really heavy-duty lease, and I pay a lot of money to be where I'm at. And you try to constantly juggle that balance. And, you know, maybe there were more city-oriented festivals that we could engage in, especially in the summertime. Weekends in the summer are really tough in Northampton as far as a restaurant goes. People are out there, especially if you don't have an outside area, I guess. But a lot of people do go away on the weekends in the summer. We see an uprise in our Friday night sales, and then Saturday, Sunday are just miserable. And also during the week, sales rise a little bit. So it's an odd cycle. I come from a very, I come from Barb, Maine, which summertime is just twenty-four, seven, straight out. So in Northampton, it's definitely the opposite. We do lose it. But thank you for your time and listen to everybody. And if there's anything we can ever, you know, come talk to me about or anything you want to know or ask.
Take care of yourself. I'll just, no, one thing for you. We already have a law in the books saying that someone can't block an entrance.
Yeah, exactly.
And can't impede someone's progress on the sidewalk. So you can always call the police, and they should know that.
Oh, you know, and I have had that discussion with a gentleman before who frequents my area. And one thing, I'm just saying that by somewhat like registering people or giving them sort of a permit, then they, then to are aware. Like, no one's going out. Like, as soon as they mess up, maybe someone just calls, and then it's just all of a sudden like, hey, you know, get it back on the bricks, stay off the sidewalk, whatever. But maybe if we did come up with some parameters that, you know, you can have a sign, but maybe you can't, you know, solicit verbally or, you know, I know. I know, I know. But I'm just saying, well, aggressively or something like that. I mean, there's been, I've heard things that come out of people's mouths. And just, I think that one thing law enforcement did say is they don't know everybody. And, you know, at least if you go by and say, hey, do you have your card? And they're like, you know, free to panhandle or whatever sort of thing. And he looks and says, okay, great. But, you know, maybe that would sort of deter anybody who is passing through and just looking, oh, I heard Northampton's a good place to make money in the week, you know, or something like that. I don't know. I mean, it's just a thought. I'm not trying to like line people up and photograph them, but I think maybe there is a way, you know? And that way, it's a two-way street. These are your parameters. If you don't go, you know, if you don't follow them, then we're going to revoke your ability to panhandle or something like that. We're going to statute on the books because it's commerce being exchanged, you know? Money's changing hands. I don't know. My two cents were fifty cents or whatever.
Thank you. Anyone else? Who'd like to go next? I know you all have two cents. Anybody? Please.
Hi, my name's Wes Sacco. Two forty Hop On Road in East Massachusetts. Cornucopia Foods and having a chocolate. Cornucopia's been in business since June twenty-third, nineteen eighty, at eight fifty-seven in the winter. So I've been in the downtown for quite a while, and it's always been a great place to visit, a great place for people to come and shop. And I echo a lot of the comments that have been made about just how positive of a place Northampton is and not to cast too many, not to make everything sound as dire as it is. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight just because I kind of felt like from hearing some of the comments and receiving things in the paper from the city council, I found the impression that it's not a very business-friendly council that a lot of times the tone and actions of some of the members just seem to have a real bias against the downtown. But the downtown is vital to property values staying high, of people's desire to come and live in Northampton. You know, this reason that it's such a welcoming place for that people want to come to live here is because it's, there's a vibrant downtown where we can go and get a nice meal and visit a bunch of different shops. I think running a business is very difficult. There's a lot of businesses who go under. There's a lot who struggle to stay afloat. The city council president was once, I think he was owner, of a video store. And, you know, that business struggled for years. And I can't help but imagine that if they were told they had to pay an extra three dollars an hour more than what they were doing, that that probably would have put them out of business much quicker. And that's the state that a lot of businesses are in right now. So they're struggling to survive. The internet is attacking every single type of business except those like lattes and, as was ultimately pointed out. There's a casino opening up this time. The construction in Springfield now, that's going to be another draw. Again, East Hampton, as was mentioned, a lot of competing towns are competing for our business. So I would hope that the city council would be taking a very friendly tone towards the downtown businesses downtown and try and work together to find solutions to things. I brought a survey in, which I thought the city council could use. And before doing anything, just kind of put it out there to all of the people in Northampton and the people who come shop here, just asking what it is that motivates them to want to come to the downtown? What is it that keeps them away? When do they shop? Just a whole lot of different demographics, just to give yourself more information about, you know, what it is that people in general are truly trying to say. In terms of my concerns of what I thought were going on, again, I'm echoing what everyone else has said. I think parking is very aggressive. I'm not going to be redone because of what you said. In terms of panhandling, I think that if we, if we were able to take old parking meters or have signs put up that talk about if you want to help support people who are in need, that you could make a text donation. You could text a donation to one of the local agencies that helps feed or house people. That way, if someone was being approached by a panhandler and they wanted to give something instead of feeding someone's drug habit, what they could do is they could use that money and give it towards an agency that was truly trying to bring some help. I think that if we did that, it would be helpful. I think a lot of the times, you know, I myself, I can walk down the street and feel totally safe. I'm six-three. But if you're a person who's been abused, if you're, I've had one, one staff person make mention that sometimes she feels like that she's walking into a construction site with a brood and the nation's comments that have been made in serious sense. So, you know, I think something, sure, we can put it in. Can I get some? So they just sort of here?
Yeah.
Sure, please.
Yes.
Has this sort of, has been used or you're suggesting?
I'm suggesting.
You created, this is a survey you created.
It was a few people.
Oh, okay. And so your hope is that we can disseminate it to people that are involved in these forums?
To every citizen in Northampton, put it out there, you know, through the regional chamber or whatever, and just get as many, get as input from as many people as possible about what people's real thoughts are, what it is that makes them want to come to Northampton, and what is it that makes them avoid the downtown.
And just to further clarify, this was created from, with the chamber or some business? Okay. Maybe we can talk later, and you can just give me a little more information just so we can let people know where it's coming from, because they'll probably ask. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Who would like to go next? See two hands.
Oh, crap. Thank you. Hi there. My name's Melissa Lewis Jenkery. M E W Y S J N zero one. I live at ninety-eight Maple Street in East Hampton, because I cannot afford to live in Northampton. And I am the manager of Modern Myths Comics and Games at thirty-four Bridge Street in Northampton. The owner would have loved to have been here, but he has moved to New York at this point, and I'm homeless here. I'm relatively new to working in Northampton. I've only been the manager about a year and a half. And I've been coming here as a consumer, valued person, you know, for about the last decade. And so I want to speak to some other things that haven't really been gone over here. But as someone who runs a business, the challenges that we are experiencing in regards to payroll costs and property costs and rent are much more severe than anything I expected. To the point that we are having board meetings, we are looking over and completely redesigning our percentages, which in the now almost fourteen years the business has been open, the percentages of how much goes towards payroll has never really changed. As wages go up, but still, sales go up. As wages go up, but still sales go up and, you know, it's always, it's, there's a flexibility. That's no longer the case. We can't do twenty percent to payroll anymore. We're gonna have to do thirty to forty. And that's a huge change in our business. With the new, um, uh, salary exemption laws that are, that are coming into place thoroughly, um, that's gonna completely change my life. I work sixty-five to seventy hours a week because I want to run a feminist comic book store. I can't run a feminist comic book store in any other town in this country. I can do it here. You know, I can have my, tonight I am speaking my, uh, my monthly queer comic discussion group. Do you think I can run a queer comic discussion group in any other town? I love this town. But, um, when, so I live in like the tumbleweed area on Main Street where, where no one really walks to. But when the rest of downtown is empty, when there's not other businesses to employ people or to draw people, our business slows. Our, we do, we, we hustle, we do a good job, but our business over the last four years has, has collapsed. We're not growing anymore. And I see that as an overall symptom of the environment that we're in. Without, uh, we, we, we survive off regulars, we survive off people who work in town. Those are our major customers, the people who work and live here. And so many times I have my regular people being like, I, I just need to cut back my, my, my weekly poll. I need to cut back my, my buying because, you know, the money just doesn't spread so far. Increased wages are a reality. And being the worst capitalist you'll ever meet, I'm basically a socialist. I'm a hundred percent for increased minimum wage. If, if you calculate, calculate out my salaries, my wages, I would make eight sixty-seven an hour. You know, I'm, I'm here not a, like a profit-oriented business. But, yeah, I would love to pay my employees more and would have to pay my employees more. I just, I'm really hoping that we bring more business, more people to the town so that I can afford to. I don't know if, if the council sees that aspect of small business. I, I, that, that's mostly why I wanted to speak to you today because that, that, that sort of intricacy, um, is something that, if unless you are a small business owner or a manager, you might not see how those margins are just being eaten each day by reasonable things. But the, the, we're not, we're not gonna see the money from increased wages for, for our employees for a long time. Not, not for most retail businesses. So in order for us to survive over the next couple of years with the increase of wages, we have to bring businesses in. We have to bring some bigger businesses in. We have to bring more people to work in this town so that way all the retail stores can stay with us and we can stay a viable downtown. And the, one way I thought of doing that, um, I don't know if you're familiar, I'm not even totally at it, I'm just, I'm just. But in Dallas in two thousand and eight, um, they applied for a grant from the state and, uh, Massachusetts, um, um, the Business Development Council has similar grants. But it, um, gave eighteen dollars a square foot in grants towards small business open, uh, small business owners to open businesses and rent. And that's something where the town, the city applied through the state and got grants. So small businesses could open, open, cause, cause initial rents are so high and as other people have stated, getting business loans are crazy. This is something that would not benefit me, we already have an established storefront. But filling in some of those other businesses, getting grants to small business owners, that would be amazing. And we might be able to, like, surge some wealth into what's going on downtown. So just wanted to give you a, a different perspective and thank you, Jordan.
Thank you for that perspective and for missing your group.
Yeah, we appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Robbins. I live at thirty-nine South Street in Woodenford, um, and I also own half of number sixteen Masonic Street in Northampton and I own the Woodstar Cafe with my husband, Matthew Robbins. Well, I just wanted to stand up and say thank you for having us tonight, this is great. And I want to second, um, Adam's strong, uh, advocate for credit card parking meters. It's, it's just like, we need to get with the times on that. It's just, it's going to happen eventually, how can we get it sooner? And I love the idea about the permanent market, whether it's like permanent farmer's market in season and maybe an artist market through, you know, Thanksgiving to Christmas. But, um, something like that, uh, would be a big draw to Northampton and would be something these other competing towns don't have. And like we do, we have to step it up, there's a lot of great stuff going on. When I go out to dinner, I drive to Springfield, yeah, every time. So I just wanted to say that. Also, when I look at Amherst, they have a festival on their common every single weekend. You're like, oh, there's this festival and then you drive down Main Street and there's a banner and then there's that festival. And, uh, I gotta imagine that is a big boost to the Amherst downtown businesses. And if there was some way we could do half as much as what they do in terms of downtown events, I think that would be amazing for our city. As a business owner, um, our business is busy and healthy and thriving and it's wonderful. But it's like, I feel like the tipping point is coming. I was surprised to hear, um, from the Modern Myths, uh, woman, that she's looking at maybe thirty percent of, uh, their earnings going to payroll. Right now, forty-two cents of every dollar that comes into the cafe goes to paying people. That leaves us not a huge percentage to do everything else we do. Under Mayor Higgins, we got the seventy point seven-five percent meals tax, which makes our places look more inflated, kind of, uh, putting downward pressure on our prices. We always had health insurance for our employees, but I know a lot of other cafes didn't. So when the health insurance came along, businesses stepped up and started providing health insurance for their employees. There's the paid sick time law, which is a significant cost and now it costs our business fourteen thousand dollars a year. They've also got aggressive minimum wage in Massachusetts. Not to mention the fact that we are approached for donations, uh, we get about fifteen requests per week and we say yes to an enormous number of them. And I know that the downtown businesses are incredibly generous with their donating, they do so, so much already. And not to forget, we're providing jobs. Like, that used to be a good thing, like, that used to just be good enough to, like, provide jobs for people. And it's certainly not good enough anymore. And so we wanna keep doing all these things. I'm, I'm not up here to say that I don't want to do any of these things, but I just, uh, hope that the city council can be supportive so that we can all keep doing these things. Cause it's, like, we're all connected, it's all connected. So just to be careful about looking to businesses for anything more. I don't think we can handle anything more. So that is the main point of what I wanted to say. And the internet does not affect my business, but it's brutal on the booksellers and the retailers. Everybody is shopping on Amazon and we need to be, as a community, there needs to be some kind of initiative of, like, shopping locally, you know, as a, as a civic duty to protect your town. So if there's some way we can get a message out to everybody that every dollar that they spend online is a dollar going to the one percent, not to the ninety-nine percent. So, thank you.
Not to put you on the spot, but a lot of the things that you mentioned as pressures are things that, you know, don't come down from the city, they're state.
Oh, absolutely.
So I was wondering if you have, what's that?
I was just saying, yes, so you know the pressures, the city's facing those pressures.
Right.
But just, uh, you know, say, let's say an example, uh, for some of the businesses, what is this new different way of charging for the water where businesses were looked to, to, certain businesses were looked to to share a slightly heavier burden, say, of the water. It really didn't affect the Woodstar when I did the online calculator, it's gonna be about two hundred dollars more per year for us. But I, I saw the way it did affect some other businesses. And so it's just like those little things, like, if we can just not put any, you know, for what the city is able to control, to just not turn to the businesses again. We're doing it, we're doing a lot. Let, let's look somewhere else.
I just wanted to thank you for calling out and reminding us all of a couple of things that it's, it's our local businesses that employ a lot of people and that employ our, our, our kids in their first summer jobs and all those sorts of things and it's a vital part of what happens. And secondly, um, when you want to, uh, support your kid's little league program or the high school crew program or arts activities, um, Amazon doesn't respond to your questions or your inquiries. As someone who's done more than my share of asking on behalf of various groups around the town, I think it's quite appropriate that we recognize how much local businesses do to support an enormous range of civic activity and nonprofit organizations and youth and arts programs. So thank you for reminding us of that.
You and a few other people mentioned, um, festivals and ways to kind of bring people downtown. You compared it to Amherst that has, uh, something almost every weekend on the common. I'm wondering if you could talk about, do you feel like there's been a difference since the bid was dissolved? Did the bid kind of adequately, um, do that kind of stuff? Does the chamber, um, operate in ways that really kind of help that kind of, um, you know, generation of people coming into the city? Or do you have ideas of how that could be generated, um, those kinds of events could happen more frequently?
Well, I'm not aware of the number of the details that would go into, um, the infrastructure that the city would need to provide. I hear there's something about the electricity that was the ultimate nail in the coffin on the, um,
Taste, taste.
Taste, right? So I don't know anything about that, but, you know, maybe there's an example or something the city could do that would allow these other organizations to do the real work. The city can't be putting on festivals themselves, but providing an easy and, um, adequate from like a structural standpoint space where others could come and run their festivals for a fee. They could pay the city, you know, to rent this park or this parking lot. But that would be there, a dedicated, maybe a dedicated space, that's all.
Yeah, we, I mean, we don't have a common like Amherst does, but, I mean, the part of the thought in the redesign of Plastique Park is to make it a more friendly space for students to come to.
That might be just the thing, come on our way.
All right, well, we'd love, you know, any more ideas that people have. And I'm sure, as you said, Suzanne Beck is here from the chamber, you know, those are all great things to talk about.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Nathan Collins and I own Happy Bowery Shop across the street. I'm part of the old hand, I mentioned, I'm remaining here, just, uh, I can't afford to right now, but, uh, that's weird. And I'm, I'm stepping here into the echo chamber and I, I do wanna talk to you all about your experience in festivals and things. The, um, the things I hear from people that are problems down, are the panhandlers and the parking. We all know the problems. Parking, I think, could be helped by lengthening the time on those meters. I understand the turnover and I understand bringing in almost two million dollars worth of revenue to the city. But I can tell you that almost every day people run out of retail shops to feed their meters or to move their cars and they don't stay. One hour does not give you time to go to lunch, let alone stroll a little bit afterward. People run out of restaurants in the middle of lunch because their meter's about to expire. Please lengthen those meters and fix this parking problem. One thing that I'm, I'm hearing in this echo chamber is that the lattes, the entertainments, the nights on the town and all that are, are working because they're giving people an experience. That's what we have to offer that the internet can't provide. They can buy a lot of items on the internet, but in my thinking is that first, don't try to compete with the internet if you can possibly help it, do something unique, something that makes this be Northampton. And then give people an experience that you can't get on the internet. Connection folks, all this talk about the heart and the soul and the things that used to bring people downtown. Now I hear from a lot of people, oh, I never go downtown, I never shop downtown. They think there's nothing down here for them and they have to walk this gauntlet of people asking for money or bags and bags on the sidewalks to get downtown. We carry things for young children as well as for adults. And that means that our customers are people with young children who have to bypass all of this street life that I don't believe is vibrant particularly. It's not a healthy, thriving, vibrant kind of street life. And, you know, there are a lot of services and we all appreciate that. And the folks whom we know who are on the streets, we all care about. And we try to help as much as we possibly can. But it's in the experience that we can witness. And this is where, we're, we're expanding actually. In the middle of all this, we're, we're growing and part of our growing is to be able to give people an experience of workshops and stories and poetry and music and all these activity things that you can't find on the internet. And I think that's a way that a lot of our downtown places can do and I hope other people will do it too. You know, where do young people play their music? Well, they should be playing it all over town because we need to help them get off this internet and not fall into those bad habits that they can get from being so, quite so disconnected. It's all about the experience and I do have some ideas about festivals and I think we can do it ourselves. I don't think we need to bring outside people in to set up and make money and take it away for a day. I think, I think we can make things happen here in town and we can give people the kinds of experiences that they can't find on the internet, that is the main competition these days, I think. Is that people sacrifice communication for convenience. They can sit in their pajamas and punch something out, but they're not getting in touch with their neighbors unless we have something that draws people together. And I think that's one of the things that really makes downtown special. And now to add the echo chamber and off this advice. But please remember that every time Northampton makes a top-ten list, a favorite place to retire, a place you have to go, the places you have to see and support and go to, it's because of downtown. It's not the people who are driving to those residential neighborhoods in their first encounter with us going, oh, this is lovely, this should make a top-ten list, no, they're seeing downtown. And it's been, kinda not fully neglected, but the, but the council and the, and the political bodies could've been more supportive of it in recent years. And let's get back on the wagon, let's do this, let's make this happen. We need some fresh things and we have some too, there's some good businesses here in town and there are good new people coming in all the time and we can refresh the town and we can give people the kind of experience that they can't find anywhere else. If only we all.
Anyone have any thoughts or comments?
My name is Tess Peronho, I live at thirty-two Masonic Street and, excuse me, I own and operate the Heav Sewing at two seventy-one Pleasant Street. I have my notes in my phone, sorry. But I have three things that I just wanna touch on. The first, uh, with regard to parking, I wanna thank the city for the validation program in the garage. A lot of people don't consider Heav as part of downtown, a lot of us do. And it's really great to be able to validate an extra hour in the garage for folks and kind of suggest that it's really not that far a walk and that they can do long-term parking in the garage. So I know when I picked up my sheet of stickers that I was the first person to buy one, they kind of couldn't believe someone was buying it, but, um, I hope that other businesses will consider it and, you know, will suggest that, that we make use of the garage because we have it. The second thing, I'm just gonna say two instead of three. The second thing is about a bid. And I think it is amazing how many people came together to create the DNA and took time to do a lot of fact-finding and a lot of discussions and a lot of meetings. And I met with Amy Taylor, the new executive director this morning, I think she's exceptional. But I think, um, it's really important to consider that the bid is the mechanism the state gives us for stable. But I think, um, it's really important to consider that the bid is the mechanism the state gives us for stable funding for downtown activities. So, that method takes away the need to do all this sort of private fundraising and, and Amy and the DNA board having to be another nonprofit in town that's raising funds. So that's a big difference between Amherst, Westfield, you know, other parts of the state and other cities around the country that also have similar types of programs. So I know it was not a good experience in 2014 to have the lawsuit, but I hope we can shake that off and at some point consider reconstituting the bid in the best and most appropriate way that we have. Thanks.
Thanks for pointing out the validation program. I feel like that hasn't been talked about enough, so.
Can I say my third thing?
Of course.
I, I, I get the whole internet sales swing and Nancy, I'm glad that you mentioned what you did because I had an open, is that similar in December about experiential retail? But, um, just in terms of some data in the fourth quarter of 2015, non-food retail sales were six hundred billion and online sales were thirteen percent of that. So I get it, there's pressure. That's nationwide. I'm sure it's different here in Northampton. But, you know, just moving forward, it's 2016, the internet's not going anywhere, so I don't think, I think we can kind of just move, move beyond that and just kind of look forward to what we can offer.
Can you repeat the number that you sent?
So the quarterly financial report comes from the U.S. Economic Census and that was six hundred billion in the fourth quarter of 2015 and that's all non-food retail.
Same for cars?
Same.
Same for things like cars and houses?
That includes, no, it doesn't include houses. That's real estate. It includes all retail sales. So that's six hundred billion and thirteen percent of that is online. So eighty-seven percent not online.
See, I'd rather see some big ticket items removed. Appliances, automobiles, all that kind of stuff, because here what we have to offer are smaller items. So I'd like to see the break down.
I can, well, I only had that figured because I had to give a presentation last week, but, you know, it's all out there. And so, you know, my point is that it's not, ninety percent of stuff is bought on the internet now and then there's one sat, store selling something. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Mr. Mario Iacomo as well, so excuse me. My name is Eric Sanz. I am a co-owner of Florence Market Place, co-owner of Hampshire Property Management Group and owner of Cedar Chest and co-owner of Emerson Way. So I have some connections in Northampton. I, I like to talk more globally about five or 10 years from now and where I think we're heading. And I think if we continue on the same direction that we are right now, I think the prognosis for Northampton is not positive at any. And I say that with data from the sales reports that I get from many retailers, both on Main Street and in Florence. So I feel like I have more factual information than almost anybody in town. And when I look at that, I, I think people have touched upon the technology and the dislocation Amazon and the internet is affecting downtown. I think there's a bifurcation of that dislocation. Retail folks are affected to a greater degree than, uh, food and beverage folks. But at the same point, if downtown isn't healthy, then it really falls and affects everybody. So when I think about things that can change, it really has to be a partnership and private business and enterprise has to execute well with the city council. And I, I think there's a general feeling from the business community that there isn't a good level of execution. That there's, um, there's a perception that we're sort of a golden pot that you can nick us for this and nick us for that. And, but eventually if you keep nicking, we're gonna die at over a thousand cuts. And I think that's how a lot of people feel. I know for me personally, I'm very frustrated with the solicitor situation. I'll give you a couple of examples on how it affects me or my businesses. We had an incident a couple of weeks ago where we had two panhandlers opening the front doors of Thorns as people were leaving and asking them, and, but I'm considered to be a fairly aggressive worker, you know, a dollar each. And I can tell you that they probably went through fifty or a hundred people by the time the cops came. The cops came very quickly and removed them. But I can tell you that some percentage of those folks aren't coming back to Northampton. And there's another way that solicitors affect downtown in a way that I don't think anybody really thinks about is that, you know, I, I do a lot of showing spaces. I lease a fair amount of storefronts in Northampton. And when I run folks through the valet of solicitors through Main Street, at the end of the showing, they look at me and saying, I don't think so. This isn't where I want to invest my money and my time and effort and I don't like the street. I can go to numerous other communities. I have lots of other choices. And I think it really has become a competitive disadvantage for Northampton in ways that I, I, I don't think people really realize. But those, those decision makers that have, um, the ability to move their capital in various communities locally are likely not located in Northampton to some degree. I know that you guys volunteer and it's great that you're listening. And I think that's really appreciated by the business community. So I just wanted to thank you for that as well.
Thank you. We, we actually don't volunteer. I mean, we, we have a small stipend, but thank you for saying that. Thank you very much for saying that.
Rich?
Thank you.
Is, is there some, I predict that you have a lot of data. Is there, is there some of it that in generic or generalized ways you could, you could, you could make available without violating any confidential information?
I think people do that as proprietary business. The representations I made, I'll never disclose that, but I can tell you factually looking at the sales data that downtown is performing well from a retail perspective. And I say that not just as a zone of Florence, I think a lot of Main Street reports. And actually particularly on Main Street, I think it's been heard to a greater degree than Florence.
When you, when you look at Thorns, for example, compared to what you would consider comparable retail and restaurant complexes elsewhere in the region over the, over the, over the years, any, any, any trends you see from your perspective?
Well, I think it's a strong performer and I think that, you know, rents are really a function of sales, so rents are fairly high in Florence and sales are immensely high in Florence. So Thorns is working well right now. But, you know, I had lunch some, with somebody today that's acquiring a large property in Western Massachusetts. And he said to me, yeah, I'm working with the city. They're giving me some grant money for facade improvements. And I looked at him, I said, boy, they'd laugh me out of town if I walked in and said, hey, I'd like you to help with the facade at Thorns. So it's just a different mindset. And I encourage the council to think about what other communities are doing. It's not that we need that kind of help. It's that we need to work together and execute well. Because if we don't in the next five or 10 years, you're not gonna get a good result. And the evidence of that is how many great new restaurants have opened up in the last decade in Northampton?
Um, I know that, I, I think Thorns is almost fully rented out at this moment, right?
We have one space still.
Thorns is still. And sort of traditionally, it's been a, an opportunity for someone to start a business there and then maybe transition to a larger space. Do you feel like that's still happening at Thorns?
I do, but I think that there's a perception that Main Street is a difficult environment. If you look at Go Berry or if you look at, uh, Park, you've got people that are camped out in front that can't be good for their business. And I think retailers fear that.
Anyone have other questions? Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Sam Gaskin. I live at thirty-two Summer Street in Northampton. I'm the general manager of Build Arts Supply at one oh two Main Street. Unfortunately, owner Bill Muller could not be here. He's at the National Stationery Show. Uh, he did want, I, fortunately, I might be listing more problems than solutions. He did want me to mention specifically that rent in general is too high for, you know, square footage numbers, but I'd say generally rent in the downtown area is between four and six thousand dollars a month, which is just enormous for anywhere. Um, he did want to mention also the lack of destination shops that people have mentioned. You know, we do have a bunch of great cafes that are successful, thankfully. And as he mentioned, there's a lot of, our children started summer jobs, but there's not a lot of careers for young people. I'm finding a lot of people who go to Smith and Hampshire, once they finish college, they're gone. Which is another unfortunate thing. A few different things I noticed, we were saying festivals, things that'll be helpful. I've noticed that with the bid program, we had a little more advertising seen for our regular festivals like Bag Day and Sidewalk Sale. Sidewalk Sale, I find is, uh, I don't know how much that costs for businesses, but that's been prohibitive for us the entire time. We've never been out in the past. I don't know how long we've been on, for thirty years. It seems a lot to me that we'd have to pay extra to be outside on our own sidewalk to make sales. But if we could have more things that participate like that with the community. Pride was wonderful. It brought so many people into town and maybe they got ice cream and food, but then they disappeared. If there's more things we could work into that in a way. Oh, and another thing I, I've noticed, I, I think a lot of upstairs businesses seem to have some sort of fee for having their signs on a sidewalk. I think it's like a hundred bucks or so. That seems, I mean, I don't really walk around with this in town to even know that they exist. That, that seems like a sort of detriment to them. But like I said, I feel unfortunately, even more problems than solutions.
Okay, whatever.
A rough perspective.
Thank you very much. Who wants to like to speak?
My name is Richard Cooper with one thirty-six South Main Street in Florence. I wear many hats. I'm a business owner of Cooper's Corner in Florence and State Street Food Store in Northampton. A property owner along with Florence Savings Bank. And, and a worker. And I feel like I'm kind of an anomaly here because I love Northampton. I love, I think everything is, is good. I like that the, the city is transparent. The leadership is transparent. I don't feel like, um, that are being nickled and dimed. I don't feel like the, um, that people are chipping away at me by adding fees because it's all going to, to infrastructure. I mean, I'm probably a small minority that I like paying taxes locally because I know that it's going for improvements. The water sewer thing, you know, boy, if our water didn't run and our sewers didn't work, you know, we'd be pretty upset and we need to look forward. And I think the mayor's doing a good job of that and the city council is. Between our two stores, we employ eighty-eight people. So it's a, you know, it is, as Council of Bidwell said, you know, it's a lot for a lot of kids. It's their first job. I think that, um, well, our, our business is doing great. We're in, we're in the food and beverage business, you know, retail, so, you know, we're not affected by, by Amazon. People aren't buying their, their D L A sandwiches or the bottom of wine or the loaf of bread through the internet. But, um, Cooper's has been in business since the nineteen fifties. State Street has been in business since the nineteen twenties. We bought it in nineteen seventy-six. We literally have not had a down month in the whole time that we've been there. Sales continue to rise. We keep, you know, I'm not finding my pockets. We're reinvesting in the business constantly, which is what I think the city is doing, is reinvesting in the city and the infrastructure. These are just kind of random thoughts. I cringe when I hear people badmouthing Smith. I think Smith gives more to the city than, than any other entity. I think that, you know, they're, they're very forthcoming with their dollars and with the programs that they offer for your charge to residents and to, you know, say that Smith needs to contribute more. I think he's just heading in the wrong direction. Yeah, people are talking about the shop locally. I think that certainly in the food business, you know, CISA has been fantastic in that respect. They've had a great campaign that people, you know, come in because they see the local hero sticker. You know, they like the fact that they're, they're buying local products. But since I have the public forum, I'll tell you, I think that a lot of people just don't, they don't think when they're shopping. As Rebecca was saying from Woodstar, you know, the number of requests we get for donations is enormous, but that's fine. But where they don't think is that they'll kind of say, you know, we need a donation for, you know, this particular event at the school. And I thought, would you like cases of water? No, no, we bought those at Costco, but we're looking for. Why don't you buy them in pound, you know? I mean, not necessarily for me, for anybody, but don't, don't go shopping in the big, big box store, then come, you know, down town to some great locations. Oh, we're talking about the transparency. So the mayor does some monthly lunch, the mayor meetings in Florence for business people. And unfortunately, there's only, you know, four to six people that attend, but that's, that's wonderful. You know, you can, you can hear your, your concerns or talk about the wonderful things that are going on. Hear from him what his plans are. I just wish more people participate. I think that, um, that the mayor and the council have done a really good job. I seek my time.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that we can't fit more than six people into a booth at Miss Flo's diner. We've tried.
But there are many other places.
Amy, did you raise your hand?
Yeah. My name is Amy Kaylin. I live at twenty-five LeBlanc Drive in Florence. And I wasn't gonna talk tonight. And really what I have to say is more to the people behind me than all of you, so I'm just gonna take advantage of your forum. I'm the new executive director for the DNA. And I feel like people are talking about us and I just wanted to stand up in front of you and say that, um, we're here for you. We love you. We shop at your stores. And I would encourage you, um, some of these things are well outside of our purview, but in terms of marketing and events and things like that, we really want to work with all of you to do what we can to benefit Northampton. So I just wanted to tell you I exist. And please talk to me and, um, we would love to pick the mayor up on perhaps John Root's suggestion of a liberal license donation. I just wanted to introduce myself to all of you.
So I'll just be brief. Oh, I'm, I'm Liz Carney and I live at one twenty-one William Street. I own six and bricks on Market Street. I just wanted to say thanks for having us around. I think that this is what keep, is gonna keep Northampton growing and great is to have conversations like this about what can keep Northampton growing and great. So I think this is great. And, um, overall, optimism about town. I love Northampton and I'm excited about what's happening. I know you're limited by what you can do to penalize landowners that keep spaces vacant, but I wonder if there's a way to kind of incentivize owners that do, um, rent their space as a kind of a flip scenario instead of penalizing, maybe incentivize. And then my only other comment is about, I think it would be great to have more events like there's kind of been discussion about and the regular market. And I feel like the Saturday market feels a little cramped in on that street and it could overflow around onto the courthouse and be a little bit more like the Burlington Saturday Market where there'll be vendors and maybe music. And that that becomes a big consistent Saturday draw as long as the Saturday market's happening.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Carney? Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
I don't know if you know, but there is a group called Pioneer Valley Local First, which is a, a group encouraging people to shop local, be local, do it in local. And they are developing now a kind of campaign similar, but different to the CISA thing, so to get the word out, to shop local. And in regard, with regard to events and things, if they could be spread out through the entire town or instead of all concentrated in that one area, that would be supportive of businesses who are in the wings on outskirts, aren't in that main block. Very often what happens for town events is they're put into that one central kind of area and the rest of the businesses suffer for it. But if they could be spread out, that would be great. And yes, I do have some ideas for events and festivals and all that kind of stuff. And that's part of my whole thinking. Thank you.
I know, um, so the city's just been doing a series of forums on how to make downtown more pedestrian and bicycle friendly. And I know there's talk of doing experiments, like with Cracker Barrel Alley or something like that, to just close it off for, you know, a day and try having something there and just, so, I mean, I, I know that we're, everyone's trying to come up with creative ideas for how to hold events, use our space, have it be accessible.
Is there a committee or a group? Do every, we're all coming up with these ideas for things. Is there any way that we can gather the ideas and see who's interested in doing it? If we could do it ourselves, it's much better than simply renting out space in Northampton for a day and some people could come in and do it anyway. We can get it there.
I would say that, um, I'm Amy of the DNA. My email is amy@northamptondna.com. And, um, I think the DNA is a great umbrella for organizing events, um, and finding spaces and doing just that. events and finding spaces and doing just that.
Do you have a committee? I'll be honest, yeah, we can do it.
And I mean, part of what we're doing here is trying to gather everyone's ideas and just, you know, over the series of forums, to look at what everyone has to say and look at the different stakeholders, whether they're businesses or workers or property owners, and see sort of the intersecting concerns, but also the intersecting ideas, and, you know, kind of compile this information and see if there, you know, what we can do to take some positive steps. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Nobody? Okay, well, thank you so very much, everyone, for coming out today and coming to share your thoughts.
Thank you.
If there are things that occurred to you, you want to say, please feel free to contact us. You can always contact me, my, you can find all of us on the city website, on the city council. My email is GLShara@sciarra@northhamptonma.com. Again, on, on the website, there are instructions for sending written testimony to Pam Powers, our administration assistant. Wonderful. So please, you know, feel free to contact us with further thoughts. Please come to the rest of the forums. Please encourage people, and thank you very, very much.
Good luck.